I'm not any of my pigs, but I have a really good Debbie assistant.
Who's your assistant?
Debbie.
Okay, it's right at seven o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting in order. I'm gonna ask Brother Perry if he'll lead us in prayer and I'll lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. It's called Span.
All right, let us pray. So Father God, we are truly grateful and honored to be here tonight to take care of our city business, the city that we love so much. So Father, I pray blessings upon everyone here for taking time out of the busy schedule to come and talk about and discuss how we can move this great city of Alma, Arkansas forward. And Father, I pray blessings upon all our citizens, everyone here, every department that is connected to this great city of Alma. Bless them for their work. Bless them for their sacrifices and bless them for the overtime that they do to keep this city running. And so, Father, bless this meeting as always. Let it be done decently and in order. And God bless the United States of America. And amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Kilpatrick. Larry Blasingame?
Here.
James McGee?
Here.
Evan Thacker? Damon Brown? Absent. Gary Perry?
Here. Have a call.
Have a call. First order of business is to, you have attached the August 17, 2023 minutes. Let you look over those and see if there's any additions or corrections and then we'll approve. I'm moving except the minutes. We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? No opposition. We don't have any committee reports tonight. It could be a little out of line, but I want to introduce Lena Pinkerton. Excuse me for mispronouncing your name. Pinkerton is running for district judge. As y'all know, Chuck Baker, Judge Baker, or Judge Small, as a lot of people like to refer to, is retiring December of '24. And I think there, at this point in time, there's three. Would you like a two-minute presentation?
My name is Lena Pinkerton. I'm a deputy prosecutor here in Crawford County. I have 14 years' experience in the district court, 12 years of that. I was a full-time prosecutor assigned to district court. I have prosecuted at least 50,000 cases in that court. It's the misdemeanor court, as many of you know. So it's everything from class A misdemeanors such as domestic battery, domestic assault, animal cruelty, to DWI's, traffic violations, wildlife tickets, anything like that, CDL tickets at the waystation on the interstate. There's a lot of revenue that comes in to jurisdictions from district court. It's a very important court, very fast-paced. And the next judge needs to have that information, that knowledge, to go forward and provide the best outcome for the citizens of Crawford County. And I feel that I am the best candidate for that. A little bit about myself, I've lived in Crawford County since 2011. I'm married to James Pinkerton, who's a small business owner. We have five kids, ages 19 to 2 years old. We're very involved. We live in Bamburra, just outside of Bamburra, actually, Torch Dora. If anybody has any questions about me or district court, I'd like to meet with you and discuss things. All right, I'll let you get to your business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We don't have anyone signed up for the Citizens Forum. I'm not aware of any unfinished business. In the new business, I've invited Kyle Morris. Those of you, I think everybody, Sandra, unfortunately, you weren't there Tuesday night in our special meeting. I have mentioned that Kyle Morris and I have visited on members' occasions and he's with my HR pros. They do several things. And one of the things they do that has a lot of interest for me, especially with the timing and everything, is they prepare payroll and pay taxes and all that. And Kyle, I'll just let you get up and make your presentation and then the council members may have some questions for you.
Yes, sir.
I'll take those out.
Okay, sure. Thank you. And Kyle, for having me. Appreciate you. Thank you. So as the mayor mentioned, he reached out to me for different contacts that we had in common and just asked kind of about what we do and how we do it. And just kind of with the role that he's taken on, it just seemed like a good fit. And so, in your packet there is the proposal for the services that we had discussed and kind of landed on. Also with our brochure, our menu, that talks about all the other things that we do. We will not be doing all those things, but we are just looking at real specifically handling the payroll and the benefits administration piece. So I don't know how in-depth you want me to get, but I'll just, what we discussed is we will take care of handling all payroll with the city, the city of Alma and their employees, paying them, things like that, paying their taxes, taking care of any kind of child support, garnishments, if there's anything like that, handling W-2s at the end of the year, all that, and that's all-inclusive in the process on the proposal. On this, the payroll plus basic HR proposal, it has a list of everything that that service entails. And on the benefits administration piece, what that is, is you have, the city has benefits that they're offering the employees. The benefits administration piece basically is doing all the administrative work of that benefit. So that way, somebody internally is not having to actually put their hands on it and have the knowledge base to handle it and not make mistakes. So common issues that happen within administering benefits is where employees will turn, will terminate, and then they'll forget to notify the carrier and they'll continue to pay a premium on an employee that hasn't been there. And so, part of that benefits administration piece is reconciling all those bills to make sure that they're only paying premiums on people that need to be on the plan, that kind of thing like that. So I could get into the weeds and all that, but I'm just gonna kind of, at this point, open it up for questions or concerns, comments you got.
Kyle, I think you told me that obviously your company makes our payroll, file all of our taxes, all those forms, and you would pay our medical insurance, any benefit we have, you will pay directly except acres, the retirement program, your company cannot pay in 401.
That's higher, that's right.
So at the payroll period, we would say, we've got to send $5,000 there and you would cut us a check for $5,000. We would actually follow that.
That's right. We would, on your invoice, that has all, we would credit that amount back on your invoice. You know, that's the amount that I need to pay the retirement.
They have another piece that we discussed that we're, I'm not recommending at this time. I heard about it at another meeting today and they use it. And that's where the employees, when they get within 15 minutes, they'll hold to that, of where they're supposed to check in, their phone is their time clock.
Like a G O P S.
Because our, and I'm not complaining, it's a fact, but when we get our time sheets, they all come at eight and leave at 12, while I come back at one and leave at five, eight hours. And I'm sure that's pretty accurate, but this would be a lot more accurate. And this keeps up with vacations, sick time. It's about $86 a month, but I didn't think we'd do it. I don't recommend we do it initially until we get the other working and all that, and do it another time. I think the basic charge for the two services that Kyle and I talked about is about $550 setup fee and then $741 a month, basically. And I could be off a few cents on that.
Now, that's also in the proposal, so yeah, $741 estimated monthly and then $550 setup. That's for the payroll.
Yeah, that's based on 36 and 40.
Yeah, based on 36.
So why do you have the discount scratched through?
Because I'm trying to help people, you know, whenever, whenever our clients.
No, no, he's taking the $50 out.
No, yeah, we're not.
We got.
Yeah, we're taking it out, yeah.
He's not marking out the discount.
He doesn't charge anybody that. He put that on there so it looks like you. You're wrong to me. Usually when our clients owe us certain fees, we just don't charge that fee. Like, it just doesn't make sense to charge it, so we just, we just discount that piece of it.
So Kyle, when we go through legislative audits, and we just have one complete and we've kind of been going through some of that discussion, if we have anything that is out of place or we've got questions about there, what kind of support does your company provide?
So as it relates to payroll, payroll taxes, employee benefits, things like that, do you have unlimited access to our team, your experts, and will answer any questions that you might have? Give you any kind of documentation or anything, whatever it needs to be, if it needs to go to somebody or whatever. The service comes with a dashboard that whoever the supervisor is, who wants to, has access to view all that stuff, has unlimited access to reports and things that are in there that they can grab out as needed or they can, we can customize reports and get to.
Yeah. Are there any other municipalities that's using your service in our area? And what's, what's the track record with, in the government or municipalities?
So I went offhand and I should have looked that up. And I was so gagged, I'm nervous coming up here and talking about that.
When I initially, when I initially asked him that question, he said, I don't think we've ever done a municipality. We've done every type of dish.
So there's your negotiating tactic.
There you go. We looked at the city of Bamburra and their accounting was nuts. And there was things coming from, there was things coming from all different types of pots, if you will. And we just couldn't, we couldn't, we didn't want to take all of that. Right. And so, everything that I've heard from the mayor about how you guys are running payroll and how you guys are handling all that stuff, don't see any issues with any of it. So, I mean, I've talked to my, all my payroll director who knows payroll in and out and he serves as clients in 33 different states of all different backgrounds and all different things, you know, industries. And they, if it's happened, they've probably seen it and they do it. I'm not the expert. You don't want me doing this. This is what I do, you know, but yeah, did that answer the question?
What, yeah, and what's the term on this and what's the back out cost?
Yeah, so no back out costs and just, we just give a 30-day notification that's, yeah, that's not working out. So then you just let us know, either via email or something like that, and then we will just, we'll help you get all the information that you need to make any kind of transition back in-house or to another provider. We're not handcuffing you. We don't want to, we just, we'll help you get out and still, because if you're not happy, then we're not gonna be happy. So we're not in that long-term thing.
I know, I'm not used, they're a particular company. I've used a very, the same program in two other places. Damon Brown has used it. He's not here tonight, but it's been effective for us in another world.
Yeah, we've been around for 28 years. We've been doing this and we're all Crawford County family-owned business. John Spitzer and Lionel, I don't know if you've ever heard them, I both was, but they've been around for a long time. They started the company back in 1995 and then kicked in ever since. Damon still owns the business. Our hub is in Bamburra, Arkansas. So we're local. If you guys need anything, I don't care to cut a check and bring it out here if I need to. And I'm also, I live in Alma as well. Can your brother-in-law's house?
I thought it was you guys.
Yeah.
You used to live over there, right down the road from you, though.
Yeah, it is, yes. We're used to that on the corner.
Yeah, actually. Let's not talk about that on here.
I mean, I'm going to do this as long as, you know, the folks that do this on a day-to-day basis are.
Yeah, what, what are your thoughts?
Yeah.
Well, just a couple things I, for that to handle, we just have to see how to make it work with income so that it works directly with the budget. But I, I've looked a little bit into it and see, I think I can do it kind of the way of the closing unit at the water park. Pull the data report, in this case, pull the payroll report, input it as a lump sum into the lady code, budget line item. So it helps to do that budget.
Yeah, so what does that, what does that look like? Is it like, just like, it used to be like a general ledger or something like that?
It's similar to a general ledger. It's a little more complicated, but.
I know, because we can, we can split out a report that has that, where it has the ability to just import, export out of our system.
Yes.
And it may be something that might be helpful.
It may be compatible. We may be able to set it up as compatible. I just have to see your system.
You betcha, yeah. We can work with you on any of that.
Chris, what do you think? I know you're, we're kind of in the transition, but.
Yes, I mean, I've showed Rhonda quite a bit on as far as it relates to payroll, but it's one of those things. I mean, I'm for it. So, I mean, for the, quite honestly, for the price, you can't. Because that takes a huge, huge burden off of, off of the department. So whatever you all decide as far as that. There's a little concerning issues as far as like acres and things like that, but I think that can be pretty much like quickly summed up. So it's not necessarily a need for like a check to be rewritten or anything like that. So 1099s, if y'all do those.
We can, we can handle those for you. We didn't discuss handling that piece of it, but we guess, we have speeding. We can just run those for you, whatever, and then of course, across to the end of the year, just like with the W-2s.
W-2s are huge. So, I mean, that's a huge.
And they get burned just immediately.
Yeah, yeah. And the employees will be able to access that on an app or kind of employee portal electronically or it can get sent to them. It usually comes out a lot quicker electronically, so they can get filed a lot quicker.
And quite honestly, like down the road, it could hit the clock in with the app. Basically, that's gonna be a game changer because there's lots of paperwork, you don't have to worry about submitting an Excel spreadsheet or someone's handwritten thing that they filled out like a week prior. Because we get those, yeah, so.
Yeah, those punches will be live in real time, so you can see them as it, as it happens and make edits to it. That's a future conversation.
Any other questions, Kyle? Hope I'm not out of line. What I would like is, if and for it, is to approve the contingent upon Rhonda and I, Kyle, everybody sitting down to make sure, you know, interfaces and works like it's supposed to.
I think I'm good with that with.
Yeah.
So we can do it by vote?
It's a, in your minutes, just need a moment.
I just asked the same question.
Oh, you did? Okay, all right. So, yeah, I'm bored too, so.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the process at these prices? Contingent upon us making double sure that it fits all the things that needs to be fixed to work for our system?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I second. We have a second.
I second.
Second, roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasingame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Damon Brown, absent. Gary Perry?
Yes.
Thank you, Kyle. We'll be in touch, Kyle.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next order of business is need a motion to bring Resolution 2023-18 to the table.
So move.
Second.
Second. All in, roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasingame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Damon Brown's absent. Gary Perry?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-18 is authorizing the police department to dispose of surplus personal property and other related purposes. And you can see under Section 1, I think, chief, these are the items that you're talking about auction off, selling, giving away or whatever.
Correct.
Chris and I were talking, it sounds like Johnny Cash is one piece of the tire.
I was explaining to Gary while I go, when we order a police car, it comes with how they build them. So in order to, you know, for example, we don't need the console, the rear door panels and those things. But they cost us extra money to have them not put those in there. So when we get them, obviously, we have those to take out and we don't have a use for them.
You didn't make the motion to approve Resolution 2023.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Kilpatrick. Larry Blasingame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Damon Brown is absent. Gary Perry?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-19, I'm going to defer to a later time. We now need a motion to bring ordinance number 2023-12 to the table.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasingame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Damon Brown is absent. Gary Perry?
Yes.
Need a motion to suspend three readings and read the title only.
So move.
So.
Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasingame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Damon Brown is absent. Gary Perry?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-12 is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for Alma, Arkansas, repealing conflicting provisions and declaring an emergency. And Cody, would you want to speak to this?
Yes, it's just updating our zoning to include the data centers that we talked about into industrial zoning, so.
This is, this is from the N S P O E. We just.
Yeah, the definitions is exactly the one that we passed regarding the noise. And then basically just lists, listing in the definitions or permitted uses, sorry.
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 23-12.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasingame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Damon Brown is absent. Gary Perry?
Yes.
Intervene a motion to declare emergency clause for this ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasingame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Damon Brown is absent. Gary Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. So move. Land plot for Con Grove, the final plot for Con Grove Road, how do you think to this?
Yeah, so it's just a, a small subdivision of five blocks and Con Grove, they're just calling it Con Grove Division. So it's just Jason Parker and Hughes, I believe.
That's Hughes.
They're splitting up some property over outside the city limits. And of course, they need a planning permission and the city council approval. It went through the planning permission, of course. There's nothing really public-wise of the building. Everybody has access to that road with their own blocks as well, marked approved drainage as well, so.
Any questions or any discussion?
I make a motion, we accept the land plot for Con Grove, final plot.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Blasingame?
Yes.
James McGee?
Yes.
Evan Thacker?
Yes.
Damon Brown is absent. Gary Perry?
Yes.
This is approved. Excuse me. The next item of business is the legislative audit. Excuse me, 20, we had two, 2021, 2022. We received the audit and last Tuesday, September the 19th, the council met with, unfortunately, Mr. Kilpatrick couldn't attend, but the rest of the council was here. We went over the audit in detail. 2021 was a pretty clean audit, had one reportable finding, which had to do with a log of current assets was not up to date, even though they mentioned that we had been working on it. This was a repeat offense ever since 2019 and was also repeated in 2022. And hopefully, we'll get something done about that fairly soon. 2022 was not so good. It was a really, really, really bad audit. The council was not happy with it at all, nor was anyone else. It had 20 reportable findings and reportable findings are things that are serious, you know. It's not something that you say, ah, they picked on us for this, nicked us for that. These were serious. They were basically financial in nature. We didn't file taxes on time. We didn't record file bank statements for an extended period of time. We were not reporting timely and accurately financial information. And the council was very disturbed and they challenged me and told me that we better get this corrected. And we are working on it and we've already made some progress. Rhonda's taken on some new things and making progress and we're all embarrassed about it. And we don't want to sit here this time next year and talking about the same thing. Although, some of this will be part of next year because we didn't really get the audit till, well, till September. But the audit was, so anything to, up until August, we can't undo. Although, one of the major issues was reconciliation of bank statements. And Rhonda's taken it upon herself to go back and reconcile all of our bank statements from January through December, which is quite an undertaking. And I think she was down here last night about 8:30. I don't know if her husband's gonna put up with this much longer about that, but.
31 years into it, you better.
He can just come down here and sit with you, yeah. But, but we, we understand the seriousness of this. I will promise you that. And we will make some progress in all of these. I don't know if the council has any questions or any comments. And Sandra, I'll be glad to visit with you one-on-one since you weren't there if and when you ever want to look at the reports and all that. Y'all got a report, though, in the mail, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, but if you want to discuss it, I'll be, Rhonda or I, either one, be more glad to do it. Or James, if you'd rather call it the James. But any comments or questions or anything? I don't want to, I don't want to gloss over it, but we did discuss it in detail on Tuesday night is the reason that we had that meeting. But we, we recognize the deficiencies. We agree with the deficiencies and we are challenged to correct those deficiencies. Anyway, if there's nothing else that you want to talk about there, then we'll go to the department reports. We'll start with Chief Parsons. Sorry to wake you up.
Chief wakes up. I mean, Chief Porter over there.
Always waiting for Chief Porter.
Yeah, he's corrupting me up there. Last month was pretty exciting, I guess. Eleven calls, two fire calls, three alarm calls, two EMS, two trees. two trees, calls, uh, one grass fire, one gas leak. Um, everything's going good, looking at trucks, every lot, different, uh, companies and stuff like that, trying to figure out, uh, they're going up daily, seems like everything is, but fire trucks are, um, we're still looking at two different, uh, truck manufacturers, uh, kind of got it there down to there, but still a process. Prob- probably even a year before we have anything, right? Couple of years before we have pre-builds or anything like that, so, um.
Chief, what realistically, how s- how soon do you think you could get a fire truck? I know it's wrong and not.
Maybe, uh, four years.
Four years.
We wouldn't even do a pre-build until two years.
Wow. When you say, okay, this is the one we want, and that might be a year and a half away?
Correct.
They lock, does that lock the price at that time?
I don't know if they're gonna lock it in these days.
Woo.
Uh, we have emissions coming out in twenty twenty-five on motors.
You mentioned that they won't give it to you in engine.
They're, they're adding another hundred thousand to it just for that. They said it could go higher, they didn't think it could go any less, but, uh, that's where we're at on motors.
Do we, I know this is not a very good question, do we ever, do they have trade-ins or anything? Or we would be able to do that or sell one or, should we need them all?
We are getting rid of three.
Oh, okay, okay.
To buy two. And that's gonna help us on equipment and stuff like that, put it back on the new trucks.
Okay, take the equipment off, put on the new trucks and that cuts down some of the purchase price.
Right. So it's, uh, it's orchestration, I mean, we're, we cannot sell all this stuff until we have.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah. And then we, we sell our trucks to another smaller community or something?
There's a couple of other different options that we can do, um, we can trade them in.
Okay.
Uh, it's better if we sell them outright.
Yeah, just like any other trade-in.
That's what we're looking to do. But that's two years before we can even do that. If we sell our truck to someone else, it's gonna be four years before.
Yeah, they can get it.
They'll pay us for it.
Right.
Right now, and it's a long process.
I understand.
A lot of, a lot of nights and weekends of working on, uh, what we need to do, so be ready.
Any more questions of, uh, Chief Parsons? Appreciate your, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Chief Porter.
So, uh, I apologize for not being here last month. Um, I was moving my daughter to college. I understand Captain Ryan, uh, did a great job, uh, which he continues to do every day. Speaking of him, uh, there's, there's a couple of grants just to let you know about. Um, I think he mentioned one of them that he had applied for, is that the equipment grant that we bought the cameras with last year? Uh, we've applied for that grant again, um, in order to get more body cameras to, to equip all of our officers with the body cameras. Uh, that's, that's still pending, uh, we don't know anything on it yet. Uh, there's another one we just applied for this week. Um, it's the block grant that we get every year, uh, it's non-competitive. As long as you submit all your paperwork correctly, you're almost guaranteed to get it. And, uh, we've submitted for some, uh, some uniform equipment, not actual uniforms, but, um, belts, replacing some of our, our, um, cases, arm belts and, um, some jackets for the officers and things like that. Uh, and then a, another grant that, uh, Captain Ryan found and applied for last week, uh, that we were already notified that we got. It's a small one, but everything helps, it's a, a toll grant through Harbor Freight where we can buy, uh, a few, uh, things that we need. Uh, it's a three hundred dollar, uh, grant to the local store, unfortunately. So, um, also in the last month, uh, I made a promotion, Jeremy Codwell, who's sergeant, um, I promoted him to lieutenant. Um, that, that filled all of our, our, uh, ranked positions, uh, now that we're full staff, I was able to, to do that. Um, Charles Bowen was hired as the new officer and he's doing a good job, he should take out his, um, his field training in the next week or so. Um, and then he will, he will be cut loose and, um, and like I said, he's doing a great job. We've been visiting with some other police departments in the, I guess, in the region, uh, going and, uh, touring their, newer departments, touring, touring their departments, uh, getting some ideas on, uh, a new building, talking to them about what they would do differently if they rebuilt today. And, uh, so we're getting a lot of good feedback on that and we'll continue that. We've got a couple of other appointments over the next three or four weeks, so. Um, the last thing, I mentioned this, um, a couple of months ago, with installing the new radios and the new, um, cameras. Uh, there was something that we kind of overlooked on, on some of the cars, we actually have five cars that we're gonna have to have rewired, um, which will require new switch boxes and, and new wiring, you know? Um, so what I would ask is, um, for you guys to approve me to spend up to seventy-five hundred dollars out of our capital outlay account, uh, to have that done. Um, I was, I was hearing the, the word sticker shocked when I got the quote on it. Um, I, I, I wasn't thinking about, they've pretty much got to rewire the, the whole car from front to back because of the way the, the Harris radios that we're getting rid of, the way they're wired in, those pretty much control everything. Um, they, and their touchscreens, we're, we're starting to have problems with those. Um, in, in the newer cars, we're, we're already phasing those out and have been for the last couple of years, but we have five that, uh, we will need to replace the switch boxes in them. So I, I would just ask for the, the quote, um, the quote is, um, for about sixty-six hundred dollars. And that's if no other parts are needed, uh, in any of the cars. So, um, I would ask you to, to approve me to spend up to seventy-five hundred.
I make the motion.
Out of our capital outlay.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second, in all of your favor. Okay, I, uh.
Um, the other thing and, and I will, um, come back to you with this, as soon as we sell these items, um, that you guys approve. Now, I appreciate that. Um, I would, I would ask that to be moved to our capital outlay to kind of make some of this up, but I will, I will come back to you once.
Just curious, where do, where do you sell that, do you have different places?
Well, we're, um, there's a company that the, um, the LA, uh, the municipal league actually.
Okay.
Um, I guess recommends, or it, it's actually an online auction, it's government agencies. Um, they post there, anybody can, anyone can, can purchase things off of it, but you have to be a government agency to sell on that. Um, it's called Gov Deals, we've never used it, uh, but with these few items, I think we're gonna try it. Um, you can set a reserve on it, you can say, we're not gonna ship it, you have to come get it. And you have, you can set several different boundaries on it. So we're gonna try and see how it works, if it works good and then we'll. Um, the cameras, there are some other, uh, law enforcement agencies that, that run those same cameras and they're interested in buying those for parts for.
Sure.
Um, because there's some that, that still have those cameras and you can't afford to switch. And, uh, so I had one smaller agency in Northwest Arkansas contact me and said, we'll buy them. Because we, we're not planning on switching anytime soon, so.
You guys do a great job. Chief Parsons, how, did y'all radios, are y'all good to go now?
Getting closer, um, we still got it, we hadn't switched to digital yet. Um, when the storm come through, it did the.
Oh, okay.
The tower down there up on the, uh, PAC, but it's, we're waiting on PD, they're getting closer, hopefully.
And we're, we're waiting on some programming stuff that's gotta come from the state before the company can program it.
Which all, get the switch all together.
Okay.
I mean, shouldn't be too much trouble, hopefully.
Mr. Yardley, public court.
Well, um, just kind of share a few things with you, uh, if you got the reports, you saw that, um, we've begun the process of, uh, preparing the master water plan for the next twenty-year period. We did this twenty years ago and we accomplished most of the items on that plan, a few things were modified and, uh, did changes in circumstances, but, um, now we're working on, uh, putting together the next twenty-year plan. It'll, it'll have, um, a five-year plan, a ten-year, fifteen and twenty-year plan. And, um, break it down for us and those are the things that we use to plan for improvements through the system. And, um, this is a long drawn-out process to put together this plan and, and we've been working here, um, over the last two and a half weeks on the, uh, the water model. And, uh, that involves looking at, um, verifying the location of water lines and the size of lines and, and the, the type of flows that are going through those lines. And if, if we have, if we have any particular needs to upsize a line based on the, the amount of flows that are going to that area and what, what the projections we have for a particular area of town. And, um, uh, twenty years ago, when we looked at this, we, we made the determination that we needed to bring a lot more flow to the south side of town. So we ran a new ten-inch line from, uh, the north side all the way down here to, uh, Main Street. And then, uh, we ran another ten-inch line over here by Lock Street. And, uh, so some things like that is what we look at. And, uh, so we're, we're in the, right in the throes of that right now. And, um, there's many moving parts to this plan, but we'll be working on that on the, it'll, it'll probably be the end of the year before we're, before we're through, but that's what we're working on. And, um, also, um, we had hoped to have our smoke testing done on our system by now. Um, we had, uh, made a, an arrangement with the Arkansas Rural, Rural Water Association to complete that smoke testing. They're just way behind right now, they're, they're having staffing issues just like everyone else and, and they're, uh, they're struggling to get the work done. But they're, um, they're planning to come on October the ninth to do just, uh, one basin, a particular basin that we need to, to address sooner than later. And this would be north of Maple Shade, um, uh, east of Rudy Road and then include Spring Hill subdivision. So that's kind of just that quadrant right up there on the north end of Maple Shade. And so, um, we're gonna smoke test that starting, um, the week of October the ninth. And, and what we do beyond that will just be determined by the weather and by the amount of time they're committed to it. They're only, they're only committed to be here for that one week.
How long does it take, like that quadrant, would that be a one-day thing or?
No, multiple days for sure. And, um, and, but, but it, you know, we don't know for sure if, if weather will allow, if it's raining, you can't do it.
Right, right.
The, the smoke testing doesn't work properly, the ground is super saturated, so. That's why we had hoped to get this done in the summer, but that, that didn't happen and that was no fault of ours, that was just, they were just so busy. And, and it wasn't really their fault either, they just couldn't provide the, the service, so. Um, and speaking of that, um, we, um, we, uh, we're still struggling with water leaks. Don't they know that, you may have heard from your constituents, I'm not sure, but, um, we have twenty active water leaks right now. And we work on, we, we get a couple repaired and then three or four more get called in. I mean, we're just, we're just hovering around plenty constantly right now. And we're working on it as hard as we can, we are, we feel like we're, we're, um, we're not staffed well enough to do what, what needs to be done, but we're, we're just doing it a bite at a time and we're doing the best that we can. Um, some folks have had a leak in front of their house, now these are small leaks that are just weeping, it keeps their yard wet right up by the road or something near the meter, but things like that and, and, uh, and some of them have been like that for, for a month and a half. And so, so they're, they're discouraged by that, we're certainly discouraged by that. But we, uh, we, we, uh, we select the, the leaks that we're gonna repair based on the quantity of water we're losing out of the system. So the, the biggest leaks get done first. So that, that makes some people, um, have to wait and, uh, they're not always happy about that because it's hard to mow when your yard is saturated. So, uh, just be aware of that if you get any calls about it, but we are doing the best that we can. And in that group, we have four guys in the line maintenance department, um, two of them have been here for less than a year. Uh, we just had one gentleman, um, go a different direction, quit. And, um, so we, we hired a new guy today, so we've got three newbies and one experienced guy in the, trying to deal with twenty water leaks. So, so I just, I just ask for your patience and I ask the community for their patience as we, as we work through this. So, um, um, other than that, just to let you know that, um, you know, after the storm we had here recently, y'all, I guess y'all knew that, um, a tree right over here across from the water office fell and came over to the fence and the water department tore out four, uh, pulp, uh, electric line poles. And we had power out at the high school and downtown here for most of the day, the next day. And, uh, that all got cleared up, cleaned up and lines replaced, but, um, the, the cleanup continues. So our, our, uh, street department guys are, are going around right now, just trying to clean up the debris. And, um, they're just going street by street and picking it up. What happens is a lot of people kind of like me, they'll wait, they don't necessarily go out there and clean it up that day, they'll let it sit out there for a month. Well, so what happens, they'll go through and every, and clean it up and then the next day, people bring stuff out that they should have already had out there from the storm. And now we have to go back through and do that again. But it's just a nature thing and we, and we expected that, so. So also ask for your patience in that, we've got two guys doing that, going around to get all this, this debris cleaned up, so. Um, other than that, uh, I don't have anything, unless y'all have any questions.
How's our water work qualifications coming along?
That's a good question. Well, the good news is Monday, uh, Damon Brown is going to, to his class on Monday.
One guy.
So we'll have one more done, so we still need another, so.
All right.
All right.
You've all been doing it for the tree board, so I. I think you got the best deal there. Any other questions of Mark?
Mark, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, the finance director, Chris. Oh, Cody, I skip it every time, you've been up here so many times today. I'm sorry, brother. I apologize and you're bringing money in, I need to stop, I need to be careful.
Well, I'm gonna keep mine for it anyway. Uh, we held the Hometown Alma kickoff event, um, a couple of weeks ago, yeah, whatever we did this, September first, yeah. So three weeks ago. Uh, so it was a great turnout, we had about seventy-five people show up. Uh, everybody seemed to have a good time learning about what Main Street is and what they do and what our new organization does with Hometown Alma. Um, Main Street Arkansas itself said it was the, their largest welcoming event that they've ever been to. So of course Alma has to do it down the way, which is big, so it was good to make that impression on them and, uh, they're excited to help us out, so. Uh, the other thing is, surprise, we have another opening for, uh, planning commission, so it's just that one that's been there, so.
Another one or just that?
Just that.
Oh, okay.
Not just, yeah, no surprise, it should have been obvious. Attended A E D C E, which is the Arkansas Economic Developers and Chamber Executives and representing the city, but also the chamber as well. Um, great conversations there, it was less attended than it was last year. I think last year was well-attended because of election year, it seemed like that's all it was last year, so. Uh, didn't get as much out of it this year and that's why I'm probably gonna rethink it next year as well, so. Um, I spoke at the Hundred Families Transportation Needs Panel and that was pretty good. Um, got to talk to them about, you know, rural transportation and what the city of Alma is doing. Uh, talked a little bit about the Rudy Road, um, project where we added bike lanes as well. And some of the communities were really, uh, surprised that, you know, we're one of the forerunners, or really frontrunners, uh, in this area for providing that kind of service, uh, for I guess, mode of transportation, so. Uh, Destination Downtown Conference, that was a requirement for joining Main Street, was you have to attend that, where there are national one and. And Monroe is a whole lot closer than Boston. And Boston already happened back in earlier this year. So, that's pretty good. And that's pretty much it. If y'all have questions.
Any questions for Cody?
I do have one. If you guys remember, it's only Thursday, September.
Okay, Chris, we do the financial part.
So, as you were all probably aware, I have tendered my resignation with the mayor as the Director of Finance, but I selected to retain myself the clerk treasurer position. So, this will be my last finance department update, which we will. I've showed Rhonda how to process payroll, state and federal taxes, as well as municipal insurance, retirement through APERS and WOSFEE. Also trained her on receiving and posting of state and county turnbacks. And we're working on that to kind of put together. The mayor's asked that we put together an understanding of what we're gonna be missing out on from the county. So, against our revenue. Final payroll records for the aquatic park has been scanned in the laser fish. And as it relates to the bond, we've completed all assigned tasks from the Friday Law Firm and Stevens, Inc., and we're on schedule. And then the last thing, most important, I guess, is the American Fidelity has increased their, their max contribution amounts for employee flex accounts. And this doesn't affect the budget in any way, but it allows the individual to contribute more if they so choose.
Do we sit down and talk to the employees? I'm just asking, do we communicate that to the employees and explain to them?
Yeah, so I sent that email to the departments today.
Okay.
I'm waiting for Tom to get me, he'll send me a sign-up sheet and we'll just have time slot there. And we'll kind of do their electives begin tentatively October 23rd and 24th. But usually they change it back and forth a little bit before I get it pinned down. So, we'll see.
Open enrollment time.
Yes, okay, good.
And one of the questions I do have, because I know it was Payne, ARPA. Do we, does everyone have an ARPA or Rhonda, do you have an ARPA login?
You got me that login?
Yes.
Or whatever needs to happen, you submit, you know?
She has that and she's actually did ARPA last night. Or ARPA, oh, wait, sorry. Did you say ARPA?
APERS or ARPA?
ARPA.
ARPA.
ARPA sign.
ARPA, no. So, I, I have to transition that over. Sorry.
Okay.
No, I haven't done that yet. Sorry, sorry.
You just want to make sure. Because I know it was, I know we ran into some challenges with when we were transitioning that before.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure that we have that covered this go around.
I, I have a login for it and I will basically add Rhonda to that.
Okay, okay.
So that if nothing's lost today.
Okay.
It's good to have like three or four people anyway on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Because we don't want to pay that money back.
Oh, I don't think we can afford that money back.
So, we had the, the financial audit that came to us. We spoke about the findings, the responses, and our actions or, or what we're gonna do to make all those things good. Was there anything you wanted to add to that? I know you did a lot of those responses and stuff.
Not really. I mean, I kind of want to just put that behind me if I can. Because it, it's one of those things. It's not the finer, finer time in my life, but it's, it's just one of those.
Specifically just on those responses, is there anything you, you advise to add to it? Because we do need to put in our minutes just that we, we're good with the, the responses and, and the action items there. Is that right, Sean? We need to make a motion to?
I think it'd be nice. So, it's an audit finding. If y'all, the state law requires that audit to be reviewed and the count governing body in the minutes have reviewed it and accept any recommendations to discuss it. Since y'all did that at your study session, I just ask Evan to just make it clear in the minutes so we don't have an audit finding next year to, to accept the recommendations that y'all talked about on Tuesday.
That was all I was asking. So, I would like to make a motion that we, that we put in our minutes the findings or responses and all the things that we need to make sure.
He's incorporating my reference, what y'all talked about on Tuesday.
That was a motion.
Yes.
And a second. A second. Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra DePatrick. Larry Blassey-Gate.
Yes.
James McGee.
Yes.
Evan Dacker.
Yes.
Damon Brown's half percent. Perry Perry.
Yes.
So, for, give you a couple of items on the parks. Start with Crystal Park. We, not a lot of updates, except that we have applied and we're waiting for responses. Was contacted actually today or yesterday, I think, but Jim wanted, wanting to start clearing the ditch. And so, got with Caitlin and she suggested that there's so many trees that need to be saved that we have a meeting among the committee and the city to outline the procedures to get that done. And I'm gonna try to call that one day next week so we can get started, get started on that. And that's basically all I have there. Praise the Lord, the aquatic park is closed. I'm so proud, though, of everyone involved. Marla, her assistants, all the workers, Rhonda. We had a lot of fun. We had a lot of tears. We had a lot of arguments. We had a lot of disagreements. But the end result was very, very good. But it's really interesting in looking at the numbers and Rhonda did a good job, as she always does, of giving you an outline there. The difference in income in 2022 and 2023 was $560. The difference in expenses was $144,000. So, we had $500 increase in income, but our expenses were $144,000 less. So, last year where we showed expenses over revenue of $49,000. This year we showed income over expenses of $99,000. We do have other expenses that we will have to pay. Rhonda projects that it could be up to $30,000. We have utilities. We have some bills that will come in. And this year, we want to have enough money for startup cost for next year that we didn't have. We need two covers. Last year, they were about 12.5 and we didn't buy them. We were smart. So, this year they're about $25,000. So, we may put a blanket over one of them. But anyway, yeah. We asked for a list of, from, from the management of the park. We wanted a list of what they thought were needs and wants. And we, we got lots of lists. But there's obviously, when you had a park open for 20, 20-plus years, water and chemicals, you're, you've got repairs to make. And, and we have a gentleman coming in the 1st of October to examine our slides. He has done work for the city before. It's Joe Safe Slides or something out of southeast Missouri. And he's coming in to tell us. Even Gordon and Marla and, and Rhonda said, you know, obviously this needs repaired. I mean, there's some obvious things. And so, we don't want to spend all of our money, but we've got to do some maintenance now or it'll be worse next year. But we'll keep you apprised of what we're gonna try to do. And there's some things at the building, the little thatch roof, the storm's finally just destroyed it. And it might be a good thing and we'll, we'll get that done. They want to do a little remodeling, reshuffling on the inside to make it a little more convenient for the workers. But I, I think we'll, we'll do fine there and, and we'll rest until next May or whenever it is. But I, but I really, it, it was, it was really trying. It was hard. But then when you get 40-plus teenagers and bad weather and sometimes angry customers, it's, it's an ordeal, but they fought through it and did it. It could have gone much better. I was really, really excited. One other thing, and I never talked about the disc park. I didn't hardly, I knew we had one. That's about all. But Eric Savage came to visit me to explain how important it is. And we have agreed, I have agreed to help them. They have 17 T-boxes, for lack of a better word. They have 18, but you can't put one on the dam, so they only do 17. And they've all been destroyed and vandalized. And so, we've agreed to help them purchase new signs. And our parts department has agreed to get some metal posts, put them in the ground. Be more difficult to tear up, but vandals can do whatever. But it will, I'm guessing it'll cost us up, up to $750 maybe or something like that. But I'm not aware of any. And it gets a lot of play and a lot of people come here and do it. I'm sure y'all already know that. I had a tournament there a couple of weeks ago. For lack of a better term, vandals, the restaurants up at the park were uninhabitable. They were awful. I mean, what they did to those things, I don't, I just can't believe. But Gordon and his crew went in there and cleaned them up. And I told them to try to keep a little bit better eye on them. But it's amazing what people do, which y'all deal with it every day. So, it doesn't surprise y'all. But I'll be glad to try to answer any questions about, you know, the various parks, if y'all have any. Again, thanks to Rhonda predominantly for the success of the Aqua Park this year. A great job.
Mayor, with some of the stuff that we need to discuss, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Okay. A motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Roll call, Sandra DePatrick.
Yeah.
Larry Blassey-Gate.
Yes.
Yes.
Evan Dacker.
Yes.
Damon Brown's half percent. Perry Perry.
Yes.
Go through.
We need to fix it real quick.
Y'all wait.
It's smaller than the root, right?
Y'all better grab some cookies before you leave.
Bye, y'all.
That was smaller.
Thank you.
Hey, let's, we ain't got a good later. You better get some cookies.
Candy just walked in here and dropped off some cookies and left.
Well, they were from the meeting I was in. She was supposed to take them home.